To the Wednesday, March 22, 2023, joint meeting of the McMinnville City Council and the McMinnville School District Board of Directors. Welcome, everyone. There is a plethora of food in the kitchen. If anybody would like to help themselves to a noce during the evening. I would like to, in addition to calling the meeting to order, I would like to do a roll call of councilors. And while we're doing that, if I could perhaps just ask councilors as well to not only state their name, but maybe their ward or a little something additional, just to make sure both bodies have an opportunity to get to know each other a little bit. I'll start over here with Councilor Chenoweth and go around the room.
Councilor Chenoweth, Ward one.
Councilor Zach Geary, Ward two, currently serving my second term. My six-year-old son, Hiram, is in kindergarten in the McMinnville School District.
Thank you.
Council President Adam Garvin, Ward three, in my second term, first elected in '16. Memorial, Patton, and Mack High grad.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilor Menke?
Kelly Menke, Ward two. I have two daughters that graduated from Mack High and one is currently a Colonel, serving for the Marine Corps in Camp Pendleton.
Jessica Payne, Ward three. I am the first class to go all the way through Dunaway Middle School, all three years, and newbie Mack High graduate. And we've had 13 children foster and not family help go through McMinnville Schools.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I'm McMinnville Mayor Remy Drabkin and former ADA, MSS, CHOOL Hawks. That's now part of the high school. I could sing it, but save you all. And Mack High, class of '98. And with that, I would like to turn the meeting to Chair Benner.
Thank you very much. I would like to do the same, kick off with Mr. Volmer.
Larry Volmer. This is my 17th year on the school board. I have a daughter who is 20-something and Mack High grad of 2021.
Paul Hadlin, had three children graduate from the school district and have enjoyed living in this beautiful city for 31 plus years.
Abby?
Abby Warren Beer. This is my second year on the school board. I have two children that will soon be both in the school district.
Janice Breich. I am finishing my 24th year on the school board and this is my last. And I've had three children graduate from McMinnville Schools and I now have two grandchildren.
Good evening. I'm Jason Bazan, class of 1994. I have a junior daughter at the high school and a freshman son.
Thank you. Carson Benner, school board chair. I've been at this for six or eight years on the school board. Been engaged with the school district for more than 15 years. Passionate about public education. Two MHS graduates. And we don't, we have districts, but not wards. We're all general practitioners. And so with that, do you want me to call the meeting to order?
Yeah, if you'd like to call your body to order.
Call the Joint City Council, McMinnville School, Work Session Meeting to Order. Gerardo did tell us that he was not going to be able to make it.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will call on our McMinnville Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Meir.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors and school board members. We have a few briefings for you tonight on projects that we think overlap and share some common missions between the school district and the city and some exciting things that are going on in McMinnville. So the first item is going to be our Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan. The last time we did one of these was 1999. And through that plan, we've actually done some really amazing things in McMinnville. We got Bender River Park from that 1999 plan, Shugwin Farms, the Jay Pearson Park, Thompson Park, West Hills Park, Discovery Meadows, Riverside Dog Park, and several segments of our West Side Path. And that was partially funded by a $9 million bond that the community passed. And we were able to do excellent things and just amazing things to have the type of park system that we currently do. So if you think about 20 years ago, I think our population was about 24,000. Our needs in open spaces were very different than they are today. Our community has told us that it's important to keep thinking about fitness in our open spaces, security camping in parks. Those are some new things that are popping up for us that we need to deal with. Technology in parks, how we keep playgrounds safe and how we have totally amazing and awesome fun playgrounds. We're thinking more about equity and the importance of land stewardship in this plan. We also think about climate change and just the change in recreation. A pump track, I don't think, was even a thing when we did our 1999 master plan. And now we have a large group in our community that wants to make that happen. So it's very exciting to see the trends. Oh, and we also learned a ton about open space and outdoor spaces through the pandemic. So we know how important that is to us now as a community if we didn't know it before. So for this project, we want to build on the vision and success of that 1999 plan. And our goal is to build a roadmap for the next 20 years of park development, park programming, and maintenance to create a modern park system based on sufficient funding and grounded in equity. And that's really the framework that we've taken into this whole planning process. We've already involved your superintendent and athletic director and we appreciate their time as part of a focus group. While we're out gathering input from our partners, we're also talking with the public. So we really appreciate their involvement in that and their time. So I'm going to introduce our consultant on this, Cindy Mendoza. She may look familiar to some of you. She was a part of the city's Phase One Facility Master Planning. And she did the public engagement component of that. MIG is the firm that she is with and they're actually the same firm that did our 1999 plan. So they came back and proposed to participate in this one again and we're thrilled to have them here. So Cindy, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Susan. Can you all hear me okay?
We're getting there. Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
We're going to try and turn your volume up, I think, a little bit, Cindy.
Does this work? It's always good to do a sound test before I start speaking.
Yeah. I think Scott's working on it.
Excellent.
Okay.
Shall I go ahead?
You should go ahead and maybe speak up a little bit more.
All right, will do. Well, Mayor Drabkin and Chair Benner, as well as council members and board members, it's my honor to be here tonight to be able to talk to you about the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan for your community. Hopefully, the sound is well enough that you can hear me. I am Cindy Mendoza. I'm our Director of Park and Recreation Planning and a Principal at MIG. I've been involved in park and recreation planning for some 20 years. And so it's my honor to be able to share my screen, potentially. I do need screen share permissions to be able to do that. And then I'll be able to go through a PowerPoint with you all to give you some highlights of your park and recreation system. So we're going to start off just quickly with an overview of why we're here tonight and what the intent is. We do want to give you some background with regards to the project, the purpose of the plan, as well as an overview of the planning process and the community engagement process in particular, because this is a community-driven plan. And with that in mind, we're going to give you a sneak preview of some of the community engagement findings. And then that'll lead into a discussion with you all. We'd like to hear both from council members and school board members with regards to the challenges that you would like the plan to address, as well as opportunities you see for the future park and recreation system. And then we'll end with a summary of next steps so you know where we're headed and when we're going to touch base with you again. Very quickly, and council members, I appreciate that you have heard some of this update already. There is some new information here. But we want to make sure that school board members also understand that the purpose of this plan is to create a 20-year guiding document that is driven by your community and based on their needs and priorities to provide an update to the inventory and existing conditions, define needs, priorities, recommendations, and vision for the future, and then create that capital improvement plan that'll actually lay out an investment strategy to successfully use your available funding to move forward over the next 20 years. As Susan already mentioned to you, this builds on a highly successful 1999 plan. I don't need to go into that anymore. I think she just gave a very stellar overview of the amazing changes that a park master plan can help bring to the community. And that has led today to the variety of parks and facilities that you have in your system. You know, you might be interested to know you have 283 acres of different types of parks and trail corridors. So mini parks, community parks, your major recreation facilities, such as your swimming pools, partnerships for gymnasiums, for example, and even those linear trail corridors that connect people to nature. In addition to those 283 acres, there's another 75 acres of additional open space as well as undeveloped parkland that is poised to be developed for the future. And all of these sites are spread across your city. And the reason I like this map is because not only does it show your parkland, but it also highlights the important role that schools have been playing all along in providing outdoor recreation amenities, sports fields, as well as indoor meeting space and indoor gymnasiums. And in addition to the school district, we also have Linfield University, Chomeketa Community College, and others that are contributing to this robust park and recreation system that stretches across the city. As Susan mentioned, we're looking not just at the distribution and the fact that we want parks available for all, but also equitable access as a component of this plan. And to understand that, we introduced the definition that's provided by the National Recreation and Parks Association, who defines equitable access as the just and fair quantity, proximity, and connections, not only to parks, but also to open space, facilities, and programs to ensure things that are safe, culturally relevant, and welcoming for everyone. And that's our goal here, really to ensure that all of your residents of all ages, all abilities, diversities, income, color, and interests all have an opportunity to take advantage of your system. And to make sure that happens, we've set up this four-phase planning process. In Phase One, we've taken an inventory of your existing conditions and your existing park system. This includes putting together a more detailed inventory, identifying some of the base mapping that you saw here moments ago, as well as crafting a community involvement strategy to make sure that we were talking to the right people at the right time through this planning process, launching a website, and then summarizing your existing conditions. It also included the first meetings with council and our advisory groups for this project, including the DEI Advisory Committee, as well as the Planning Commission. That moved us into Phase Two, which is where we are now, where we are identifying needs for the future. And to do that included a robust community outreach and engagement process that we're going to talk about in more detail here momentarily. But we pair what we hear from the community with a technical analysis of your park and recreation system. So it's not just based on wants and needs, but also based on the people who may not speak up about their needs. That technical analysis may uncover some of those gap areas that need improved service. And so we incorporate all that information into Brief Number Two, which is the Needs Assessment Summary, and then have another check-in planned when we complete that to be able to meet with you all to make sure that those needs are on track before we move to Phase Three. In Phase Three, that's our recommendations phase. Now that we know what's needed, we want to talk about how do we actually achieve that? What are our goals for the future? What are the capital improvement projects, as well as the operational initiatives that are needed to address that future park system? This phase also includes detailed work around your system's development charges, because it's important not only to understand what goals you have for the future, but actually be able to fund those. And it also identifies some updates that may be needed to your comprehensive plan and city code in order to be consistent with new recommendations and levels of service that may be desired in your community. At that point, we have another check-in with you all before moving into Phase Four, which is where we prioritize projects to create that shorter-term action plan and matching funding plan for the future and create and develop the full draft and final master plan reviewed by you all in the public to make sure that we are on track with where this project needs to go and the implementation strategies for the future. And with that, I'm going to pause just briefly to see if there are any clarifying questions about that planning process. And if none, there's additional detail that I'd like to share with you.
Looks like no questions at this time.
Sounds great. Thank you. As Susan mentioned, there are many challenges that we'd like through this plan to address. A few of them are noted here. In terms of balancing growth and character, maybe the more fun way to describe this is how do we keep the fabulous events such as lemonade stands down Main Street and balance that with the fact that you are now a destination community for retirees who appreciate the wineries and everything else about your community? How do we make sure we are balancing the needs of that new growth with character, but also with the needs of your existing system and existing community, residents who have been there a long time? And knowing that there's changing conditions, changing trends in recreation, how do we prioritize investment and then build partner support and consensus for how to move forward? We started addressing some of these questions by taking stock of the existing conditions of your park system. Our landscape architects went around to every park, every site, to assess the age and condition of play equipment, as well as all your amenities and facilities in parks. The landscaping flooding packs, which in light of flooding that's occurred here recently, is a key need as well, as well as specialized and unique opportunities, your specialized facilities, for example, and safety concerns. And then we also have started an analysis of your park system based on the distribution of parks, as well as the access points that you have to parks throughout the city. What I'm sharing with you now is what we call a service area map that shades in orange. The darker orange is a quarter-mile walking distance to your parks. Areas shaded in the more salmon color, the lighter orange, is a half-mile walking distance to your parks. And those distances are important because a half-mile is known as kind of the industry standard for the distance that people tend to be willing to actually walk to get to a destination such as a park. So something within a half-mile, according to NRPA and then the Trust for Public Land, are considered to be within an easy-walking or biking distance. And so those parks tend to be most accessible. And we do this analysis to be able to show which areas don't have parks. And eventually, we'll identify gaps. But one of the things we want you to realize is that if you look already, you can see that schools stand out in some of the areas where there are not parks providing access currently. So we want to do a next level of evaluation before we come back to you with the needs assessment. And on one hand, we'll look at existing land uses. You know, where are your residential areas? Where is residential density the highest? Where are other opportunities such as schools available within those gaps? And then we also want to look at equity issues. Where are the income disparities across your community and lower-income residents that might have greater needs? Where are your communities of color? And what portion of various areas are high percentage of youth as well? Recognizing that families may have unique needs. So that's the next phase of this analysis to come forward. We just wanted to give you that sneak peek today. And that allows us to start to think about some of the opportunities for the future. And certainly, partnerships has come up as an important piece of that, both when we talked about replacing and updating your recreation and community center, but also in moving forward with regards to sports fields and other elements across the system. There's certainly an interest in strengthening your park system overall, both in terms of the funding investment and addressing aging park and amenities and facilities, but really figuring out how to provide the right mix of parks and programs that support that desired level of service for your community and a high quality of life. And then finally, how do we address the needs for new parks in those new growth areas? Those are all on our radar as future opportunities. And part of the way we've been gathering data about that is to talk not just to you all, but to create many touchpoints with your community. These have included one-on-one, in-depth interviews with 10 different people representing the city staff, parents with kids in your school district, Hispanic and Latino residents, and others to understand what are the needs of key stakeholders and unique views in your community. As you saw from our planning process, we also met with the DEI Advisory Committee in a series of meetings, and I'll have some highlights in a moment. There was a city partners' focus group, a community survey. And as shown in the photo here, we also did a pop-up event in the community group Unidos, at the Resource Fair, to be able to provide information about the planning process and collect information as well. And then this is followed up with additional meetings that are intended to happen with decision-makers, as well as Hispanic and Latino residents in the future. Some highlights from some of these activities with regards to the DEI advisory group, you'll see that they had a strong conversation around challenges that included everything from ADA accessibility to funding, maintenance, and safety. But they also talked more about opportunities for the future with an emphasis on programs for youth, leveraging your community's culture and vitality, and even involving volunteers and partners more strongly in your park system. And then they had some guidance as well with regards to outreach that helped us make sure we were asking the right questions of your community. We also met with city partners that included representatives from McMinnville School District, as well as McMinnville High School Athletics, Chomeketa Community College, Linfield University, Visit McMinnville, the Downtown Association, Yamhill County Parks as well. And the intent was to talk there about opportunities, assets, needs, improvements, and desired changes. What you see here on this slide are some of the highlights from comments made with regards to desired changes. And you can see that some of the things that were emphasized is the potential for additional large events in your community, either through an amphitheater or event space. The desire for more trails, inexpensive, cost-effective ways to connect people to nature and the outdoors. And then also a discussion around equity, specifically with lots of comments around youth as well to ensure that we're providing the right opportunities for all residents across your system. There was also a highly successful survey that ran from December through February and involved over 2,000 respondents in collecting data about your system. There's a map that goes with it that I'm not going to share with you tonight so you have something to look forward to. But it shows the extensive response that was received from all parts of your community, including, in some cases, people from outside the city who either work in McMinnville or own a business, as noted on this graphic here, or go to school here or have visited or traveled here for other reasons. But by far, the majority of participation is really from your residents to understand their key needs. And some highlights to know what's coming forward, if we ask how important parks and open spaces are to quality of life, you will see that around 95%, over 95% indicated that it's important or very important. We know that this is just a key issue for McMinnville. And there is just that support for higher investment to improve the community livability. We also ask questions about why parks and recreation are important. And as you can see here, those connections to the outdoors and nature were actually the top response among survey respondents, which, by the way, we will identify comparables in conjunction with the other outreach activities. So according to survey respondents, the top reasons to invest in the park system and what's important are about connections to nature, being active, enjoying exercise and fitness, but then also having that opportunity to gather with friends, family, and community, which affects kind of that the conversation we were just having around the importance of events here in the community. So these really are teasers that we're hearing from others across your community. And we wanted to share those with you so that you could address these two key questions that we put together here on one slide for you tonight. And that is, we want to hear from you all at this point about the key opportunities and challenges that you see this plan should address. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the mayor to help kind of facilitate this conversation. And if you prefer, I'll go ahead and quit sharing my screen at this point so we can see you all in this conversation.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you. And I just want to note that despite being given the heads up, I did forget to call on Counselor Sal Peralta, who is with us on Zoom, to introduce himself. So I just wanted to note for the record that he's in attendance in the meeting as well. And with that, we'll open it up to both council and school board members for conversation. If nobody wants to jump in, then maybe we'll go around the table. But we'll just open it up for an opportunity to address, well, the opportunities and challenges with our future parks plan. Chair?
I think we come from a world where there's sort of a student and student has a need. And so we count up the students and we quantify that as a need. And then we build on that where we want class sizes. And so it's a very sort of scientific way of looking at it. And I'm so unfamiliar with this other world. How do you know when you have enough parks? How do you know when you don't have enough parks? And when you look at that map that showed where there were parks close and there was big white areas, I assume those white areas are areas of concern. Can you sort of elaborate? How do you get to a more scientific way of saying we have enough or we don't have enough open spaces aside from asking the residents? Because I love our parks and I say wonderful things about it, but I don't know whether McMinnville has enough or has too many.
That's a really good question. And we'll be able to bring that information back at the meeting when we have the full needs assessment completed. But the highlight is this. The map that you see is one way of measuring park needs through a technical analysis. It's based on travel distance, access, and park distribution. There are additional ways to quantify park needs. We often talk about metrics in terms of parks' level of service. For parkland, it's measured in terms of acres per 1,000 residents. By having that type of metric, it allows us to benchmark your city in comparison to other communities, to also see where you are above the norm in terms of some data that NRPA provides with regards to park metrics across the nation to see whether you're in the upper quartile, middle quartile, or lower quartile in terms of the amount of parkland available. We often take that and we actually dilute it in based on park type as well. So how much of that overall level of service includes acres per thousand that are wrapped into your mini parks versus your community parks versus your trail corridors? So that allows us to start to ensure that we are providing the right mix of parks based on their function and use. For example, when we talk about walking access, really, people need walking access to those close-to-home neighborhood and mini parks. You don't necessarily expect walking access to all of your community parks, which provide those specialized facilities that attract people from greater distances. So for facilities, there's a different type of analysis. It's often measured, the level of service, based on one facility per number of residents served. And then even further, we recognize that there are specialized facilities, such as aquatic facilities, as well as the recreation center, that need to consider other metrics besides what the community tells you they want. Besides the level of service desired, we need to pay attention to financial feasibility and operations costs. So that's where those realities of efficiencies are kind of married together to create a realistic assessment.
Cindy, if I can jump into, this is something that from the 1999 master plan, we identified a level of service that I think was 19 acres per thousand. And then through the conversation about funding and building capacity to actually meet that level of service, we didn't quite hit that mark. So that's one of the reasons why we really talk about this being well-funded and thought through so that we can commit to the community about what we're going to build and maintain and actually hit those marks. And then, like Cindy said, the other thing that's really important is if you're only looking at acreage, if you're only looking at 19 acres per thousand residents, you might not get the underserved neighborhoods[1795.05] you might not get the underserved neighborhoods as served as they should be. So that's one reason why that map with the service area in the quarter-mile and half-mile walk is really helpful for us to see, okay, we could have all of the acreage in one area of town and meet one criteria of how many acres per thousand, but we really need to think about quality, quantity, location, and type throughout the whole city. So this is, it's going to be a great look for, a really broad look at how our community is served in all different modes of transportation, socioeconomic classes, everything. So it's exciting.
One last question, then I'll pass the mic. That, one of the, I feel disappointing trends that we've seen in McMinnville is that we're growing older, we're having fewer children. And when I think about parks, what effects that has on what those parks should be. Do you look at projecting about what's going to happen? And if Remy and I are not successful and we can't build more houses, what do we do to account for that? Because the park needs of a younger community are going to be different than an older community.
Those needs are different. And one of the things that's really interesting is many cities have a park system that focuses on the needs of youth. And that's definitely important, but as you mentioned, it's important that we also provide parks that serve all ages across your community. So we look at the mix of active recreation versus passive recreation, for example. When we talk about connections to nature, for some people, that is a, you know, active mountain biking trail to get out in nature or even tree climbing programs that are offered in some places. In other places, connections to nature means having a quiet bench to sit and listen to the birds. So we look at those different needs and we start to find out what areas of the community have strongest needs for youth versus other ages. As I mentioned, that's part of the mapping exercise that is coming next. And so that allows us to identify, you know, I would dare say everybody needs places to play, but play for adults is very different from play for children. So it may be outdoor fitness equipment versus play structures and nature play elements. It may be having sports courts that are lower impact, such as pickleball, for example. So those are just a few of the ways we start to take into account the variety of needs and marry that with what we see in terms of your parks' opportunities to recommend improvements. And sometimes when we talk about improvements, that's not necessarily putting back in something at the end of its life cycle, this exact same as what you're taking out. It may be refreshing it with something that is more appropriate for the community demographics currently.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? Counselor Gary?
Thank you. Wonder if it also wouldn't be helpful to do a primer of what our different types of parks are and why we label them as such, neighborhood activity and the like. But as far as challenges to address, I think one for the city would be, how do we make sure this recognizes the changing climate and builds into it ways we can help and assist with that? I'd just, would love to hear a little bit more about that, how more specifically we're able to make this next 20-year plan recognize that rapidly shifting trend.
Cindy, do you want to answer the second question first?
Sure.
And then I'll answer the first one.
To how to use the 20-year plan most effectively and what kind of support you can provide. I would say, first of all, the coordination with partners is going to be key to implementation. What we're realizing over the last three years is that the costs have escalated, not only with inflation, but supply chain issues, staffing being more of a challenge in terms of getting staff hires. So costs are rising. So we want to make sure that we are building in a plan that's realistic and achievable, but also leveraging the support of partners who can work together and contribute towards addressing those needs. That's kind of a long and short way of looking at the ways to offset costs and building cost efficiencies by leveraging volunteers as well, students at the university and college in terms of partnerships there, as well as funding options, joint funding options, where schools may have an interest in a certain type of opportunity for their students and youth that the Parks Department can also support and vice versa.
Thank you. Others at the table?
And I do want me to give the little primer about the different, yeah. So we have, well, this is one of the benefits of doing this plan. We have a number of different layers of documents and plans that call some of our parks different things. But essentially, we have neighborhood parks, which are three to five acres. Those are designed to serve the surrounding area. They typically don't have parking lots, some do. They typically don't have restrooms, some do. And those are designed by local, you know, like for the Jay Pearson Neighborhood Park, that one was really brought in and discussed with the surrounding neighbors to ask them what they wanted to see in a local park. And then we have our regional parks, our community parks. That's Joe Dancer, Discovery Meadows, Warpman Park, City Park, and Airport Park, I believe. This is where the definitions get a little different. Those are bigger parks where we expect to have larger events. We typically have parking lots there and restroom facilities. We often do reservations out of those parks so people can reserve the picnic shelters. And then we have some unique parks. One of the ones that's not developed, but probably the best-known undeveloped park in McMinnville is Quarry Park. That's one that we've had a couple of master plans for it. We'll be looking at that again. That one would be a special-use park. And then we have linear and trail parks. So obviously, the BPA path on the west side and most of those different elements that connect would be our linear paths. And I actually think Airport might be a linear path. So we look at all of those different types. And then another special use would be the dog park. So we look at those kinds of things as we go through how we want to categorize and identify the next master plan full of parks.
Thank you. I'll take a turn at a question here. I, one a little weightier than the other, but I did receive about 26 or 28 letters this morning from students in a community connection class at Dunaway. There was a large call for a trampoline park throughout those letters. So I feel like in my response, I'd like to be able to say that I floated the idea here.
Love it. Love it.
There's a question in there somewhere. But my question kind of goes back to your comments, Director Muir, on the quality of parks. And so that's kind of a two-part question, which is, one, what do we do with excess park or underutilized? And by underutilized, I mean maybe parks we aren't maintaining, parks that, I can think of kind of a postage stamp in my neighborhood of grass with some sand in it that, as far as I know, is only used as a garbage collection site. So how do we deal with excess? Either through converting that into a more usable park and then a more specified need? I know there's been a lot of call for kind of edible gardens or community garden spaces in this process, which I think has a natural tie-in with the school district as well to have that type of access. Or if we're not reinventing those existing park spaces, how does this master plan deal with maybe selling those for either just revenue or other, to meet other community needs?
Yeah, great question. We have a few of those. Either underdeveloped or undeveloped parklands that, you know, the one I think about is Thompson. That, when that park came up, we took, we didn't really spend any money or resources on maintaining the park that that one was designed to replace, but we still own it. And this plan will address that. They will map what the future parks would be. So if we have Quarry Park, they would make a recommendation based on the community needs about what the future of that property is. If there is a property that is too close to another park or undevelopable for a park use, that would also be a part of this recommendation. And then it would be a council decision about, would you like to talk about changing the use? Would you like to look at selling it? What's the highest and best use for the city as a part of that? And with that, we would also bring, you know, the park fund is relatively small right now. It's mainly funded through system development charges. And so just like the Airport Fund or other special funds, we would want to try and keep that fund whole if we are exchanging property or making some sort of, you know, if we're, yeah, if we're deciding to sell a piece of property, we would just want to make sure that the proper accounting goes for that. We also need to look back at several of the parcels that were either funded by grant to purchase. Some of those might have restrictions on them, that we can't sell them. Donated parks sometimes have those on the deed as well. So we would just need to go through a pretty deep analysis, park by park. Those that we do not see being a part of the park system, what do we do with them and bring that forward to council? And I think there will be at least one or two that will fall into that category.
All right. Thank you. Council President?
Yeah, thank you, Director Muir. To build on the mayor's question, obviously, more acreage is great, but I'd really like to see in the plan kind of what it would take to just elevate the level of parks we have currently. When you think the linear park and the BPA access, putting some exercise-type structures along that path, like I saw over in the Boise area, maybe with our rain climate, they're not quite as durable over here, but something of that nature, revamping Warpman, looking at bathrooms to be replaced with more modern, harder to have abnormal behaviors in them, like the Portland Lou that we have out at Jay Pearson Park. So looking to not just bring more acreage in and create more demand for our staff to maintain, but look where we could increase efficiency just in that bathroom model if our staff has to spend less time maintaining these bathrooms that have been there since I was pounding nails at the City Park here, building that play structure up from Memorial. I would really like to see that to let our staff focus on keeping the parks beautiful and not trying to address mental health behaviors and vandalism.
Yes. It's very exciting to hear this conversation, for me at least. And I would also just connect this back to the conversation the city's been having about core services. One of the things that we've been working on is trying to elevate the parks' maintenance from below base to base, and you all will see that again this year in the budget. And some of that will include that. We are talking about a phasing plan for all of the park restrooms to go from what we consider the stick-built restrooms, which today we know those sometimes make people feel unsafe because part of it is the noise, they're mostly concrete. Part of it is there might be somebody in there that you're not aware of, but too late, you find out too late that there's some bad behavior happening in there. And so we are developing a plan to replace all of our stick-built bathrooms with Portland Lou's and looking at what that might cost over time and how we can do that sooner rather than later in some of our problem areas where we do have vandalism or, you know, camping happening in some of the parks. That is definitely something that we want to look at is, the maintenance will be wrapped into this too. So we will present a plan that shows what the maintenance staffing levels need to be. That also was in 1999's plan. And through budget cuts and other things over time, I think that was, we didn't keep up on that. So that will be a part of this plan, and ultimately, the council will get to decide what level do you want to fund that at and how do we go from what we think of? And the staff has already identified this as a below-base service right now in parks' maintenance to base and then even above base. It's a really important factor.
Please.
Maybe this question is for Cindy. Hi Cindy, this is Jason Bazan, McMinnville School District. My question is, when you look at these master plans, does any sort of revenue generation come into looking at how we design our park systems as a potential revenue generator?
Definitely does, and especially with regards to your major facilities. When you look at a new recreation center or even a sports field complex or even are making decisions on whether to put artificial turf versus a natural turf sports field, certainly that revenue implication is always at the fore. We tend to talk of it in terms of cost recovery. So what's the level of investment or subsidy versus what's the return on your investment? And what we realize though is that major facilities, in most cases, such as your swimming pools, are actually highly subsidized. So you want to make sure that you are very actively considering ways to increase revenues, whether it's providing rental cabanas at the edge of your pool, a party room to ensure that there are reservations, obviously, different types of programs, not only learn to swim, but with regards to water fitness classes with your sports fields. You know, there's often a thought that sports fields can generate lots of income and revenues for you. And it really depends. In some cases, you want to make sure that you are making your sports fields available for not only introductory sports and recreational sports, but also competitive sports. It's the competitive sports that tend to generate the most revenue in terms of field reservations and rentals. But at the same time, you don't want to price out students, you know, younger families, others, or even adults who want to play soccer on a drop-in basis, for example, or recreationally. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about those revenue-based opportunities, we're also are matching that with the conversation around how do we maintain affordability.
There's a middle ground there that has to be found somewhere. Yeah.
Can we also add on to that, just overall for everybody? The Parks and Rec Department is overall sort of on average, and if we throw the pandemic period away, about 50% cost recovery. So the general fund subsidizes the rest of Parks and Rec so that we can, you know, keep a pool running. Pools don't make money, they lose money, and that's why they're generally provided by public agencies. And so we just have to keep all of that in mind, but typically, we're 50%.
Yeah. Yeah, and the idea of the amphitheater or concert venue, I mean, you talk about McMinnville being a destination, a winery, the swimming Spruce Goose Center wave pool. If you could somehow tie that into an open space, then potentially, there's opportunities to fund those services going forward and pay for a lot, or as Cindy said, cost recover that.
And we are working with Visit McMinnville. They were a part of our partner group as well to think about how we might be able to, as a matter of fact, they're funding a study right now on Quarry Park and helping us and partnering to determine how can we continue to build our open space network to both serve and help subsidize our local community while also bringing in and being available for large events and other types of activities.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Other comments? Council President?
Yeah, I would be interested if anybody from the school board has any insight into like sports complex and the facility needs of the school district and how that could dovetail into this Parks and Master Planning process. I see kids out practicing at nine o'clock at night. And so just driving through town, it would appear that there's a need for more facilities so kids aren't out that late practicing. I know kids like to be out that late, but parents don't share that same thought.
Superintendent?
Yeah, so we just now, I mean, it's been done in the past, but we've started a committee and we're having discussions now on the biggest needs, bringing in partners from throughout the city as well as coaches, city coaches, our own coaches, as well as those that coach youth programs. Because many of the times you see the real late use of practices is because that's the only time those that want to use our facilities that aren't school-based can get onto the facilities, and they're desperate. They literally say, tell us any time you have, we'll practice at five in the morning or 10 at night. We just need a facility. So luckily, our own students within our own teams have first access to our facilities. So yes, when you see people out there at nine o'clock at night, it's probably not our MSD directly related to our teams, but it is the city programs and other youth programs that need to use our facilities. So our conversations now are starting. We do have needs for facilities. We know tennis courts are very limited. Not only are they limited, but we, it rains more time than it doesn't, and we have to move tennis practices, cancel games, or move practices into gyms, which is not ideal. So we know tennis has an issue. We also know swimming has been an ongoing issue as well as turf fields for playing. We're bringing back middle school sports next year in both soccers, at both soccer teams at both middle schools, so finding them facilities to play. I could go on with basketball, and I know there's other, not basketball, but baseball. Having one field for four teams becomes a major issue. And so we're using the limited space we have and trying to squeeze every minute out of the days to use them. But we have facility needs ourselves that we are now looking into before our future bonds to really identify not only what we may possibly have to upgrade or add, but also what we have to do just to maintain the facilities we currently have so that they're safe and students are able to use them.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns, opportunities for members of the school board or the council? Yes, Counselor Payne, sorry.
Susan and I have talked at length about Remy and I's sentiment about our neighborhood park, Sand Pit, and just kind of the usability of that or its future use. But it begs the question, like, we have Heather Hollow, you know, and I think that would be like one of the greatest places ever, which probably nobody has. There's very few people who know what I'm talking about, but you know what I'm talking about, which is a which is a very extensive green space that we have and probably not figured out the highest and best use for it. So in terms of challenges, I'm curious about that. I also share the sentiment about the trampolines. But that's related to, kind of speaks to the adaptive, you know, the DEIAC piece that Parks and Rec has been working so diligently on in really addressing adaptive play ideas for children and youth who have, you know, higher sensory needs or different sensory needs. Trampoline certainly could address that, I don't know liability level if we want to go down that rabbit hole, but...
I'm going to refer those students to you, just...
What's that?
I'm going to refer those students to you.
Probably if they're in my neighborhood, there's already some on the trampoline in my backyard. But also, it occurred to me that with the extension of, I can't recall all of the street names, but like, so there's Kingwood, and then there's American Drive, and then there's kind of that extension that's gone toward the river and then further on to the east, is that, is the, is the Kingwood Park meeting that need of that recent expansion? Because when Kingwood Park was initially built, it was just for the Kingwood subdivision, and now you've got the Sunflower Apartments, you've got Virginia Garcia that's heavily, you know, it's just so populated, and then you have these two tiny parks, is that enough?
Well, that's part of what we'll see, and I will say, I go to Kingwood, and I don't think that people do know it's there because it's kind of tucked in the middle of things. And if they do know it's there, they're not sure if it's a city park or a private park or belonging to the homeowners association. I think that we will probably move away from parks that are that small as we go forward in the new plan. And certainly, part of that will be evaluating whether or not Kingwood's enough to serve all of that growth. I would be a little surprised if it is, but it might be. And we'll just look at that, again, that map that shows the quarter-mile walk versus the half-mile walk and see where those families are able to go and build that into it. So yeah, we'll definitely be looking at part of that.
Speaking of that side of town, I know that we saw some pictures of Wings and Waves, but there's another, I think it would probably be our only private park playground facility that's at Evergreen, and so folks that are on that side of town can also somewhat access that. It's not super walkable either, but I was wondering if that has been included.
You know, I will take note of that. I'm not sure Cindy if we've used, included that on our mapping and other things, so we'll note that and check on that and get it in there.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. First, I'd like to say I moved here in 1982 into Kingwood, and Kingwood Park is a dear memory for me. I've been back there for probably 30 years, but I think that's a great park. I think that idea of having it in the center of homes is just fantastic for a number of reasons. But that is made, it's very small. I wonder, when I grew up in that area, there were a lot of trails running alongside the river that I would bike on and walk on and fish, maybe not legally, down through that area. And I wonder how much of this discussion will include looking at that kind of Riverwalk area, not making it too, obviously, I'm not interested in concrete Riverwalks, I like the dirt paths. Is that in this discussion?
Yes, in the survey that MIG came up with actually had a tool where you could put a marker on the map and talk about what type of facility you would like to see there. And so I suspect that a lot of these, you know, off, sort of behind-the-scenes trails and parks that people use that might not be publicly owned will come up through that and will be able to look at it.
Yeah, I'm relatively certain that the land I was on was private. But, you know, it would be wonderful if we could find a way to incorporate that and get ownership without having to too much struggle. I'm not really necessarily interested in eminent domain for it, but, you know, some way to develop that to a similar park to what we have on, off West Side Road. The other thing I'd just like to put in a plug into what Carson was saying when he started out. I don't see a lot of empirical, for me as an analytical guy, how do we have too many people using the parks during this period of time, which indicates the parks are overused during this period of time? Therefore, we need more park space available for them? I don't see that kind of data. Is that kind of data going to come forward at some point in time in this discussion? Kind of pointing to what the superintendent was saying, she was talking about the inability, lack of availability for some of the things that her students are wanting to use. Can we get some empirical data to show that so that we can get a better understanding of what's going on?
And I think Cindy can give you some nationwide standards of how that works because part of it is the walkability, part of it is the size, part of it is the amenities that are in the parks. There is not a great way to count unless it's a programmed field like the school district where we have reservations or programmings running in it. We know what the counts are, we know how many requests we get to use that. But really, when you move to playgrounds and informal parks, there's no way to count people who are coming and going there, so we use other data points, and Cindy probably has a better perspective about that.
Indeed, Susan, you're absolutely correct that because we don't have the actual counts of using parkland, we use proxy data such as density, for example, around each park. So we can identify where are the sites where you have a really small amount of parkland serving a large amount of people, and then based on that, understand kind of demands, needs, and use. It also factors in in terms of events in your community parks. There are some parks that are higher impact, not because they have more people living around them, but because they are running programs that are attracting more people. So as Susan mentioned, you have counts for programs and events, but you also want to look at the maintenance required because of all of the foot traffic that's in the park. So it's both demand and foot traffic based on different opportunities.
Right, but that's not really necessarily clear just by the number of houses that are around it or the number of people that are living in that neighborhood. I mean, you could have a park that's sitting in a neighborhood and everybody around them is never using it. So I guess kind of having an understanding of are these, are our parks really being overused or underused at this point? And is that a function of, you know, the number of people that want to use the parks? Or is that a function of us not providing the services they actually wanted at the parks? But some sort of empirical data that would give us some direction on that would be very helpful, at least for this counselor, would be very helpful.
And I would just say, we're not at that point yet in this plan. We're still gathering public input and conducting focus groups. So you should be starting to see some of that in the future phases, and hopefully we'll meet your needs, and if not, we'll try.
Wonderful. Any other, any, yep, Counselor?
Perhaps this is a little bit of a jumping, leapfrogging segue, but it touches a little bit on your update and Counselor Garvin's question. And it's an opportunity and suggestion and challenge, but hopefully that, and I am so grumpy and foul enough that I don't like to share my stuff, but representing the public, I'm happy to share our stuff, is the more we can both launch those assessments and needs analysis of that overlapping interest of the kids and what the kids become is so important as we face a new reality of local jurisdictional budgets and our ability to serve and what we can realistically do, that if we can, more, we can join forces and build fields that you guys can operate programs out of and build such that we don't all want Saturday at 10:00 a.m. or, you know, Thursday at four and five to practice at. If that's not a choice we have to, you know, jump into the pit and fight to the death for, then great. So if we can build those things and you guys can help us operate them, that's, now we're talking. So that would just be my plug for this, capping this discussion and moving.
Wonderful, I am also ready to cap this discussion unless there's any last comments?
Counselor Peralta has his hand raised.
Thank you so much, Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Claudia for catching that before we moved on. I had a couple of questions. I'm really interested in the, I guess you're calling them linear parks, but they're basically trailheads. I agree with both Counselor Payne and Counselor Chenoweth about a desire to see more infrastructure built in seasonally along the Cozine Creek floodplain and South Yamhill River. What I'm wondering is, do you have a way of tying that in to other kinds of work that needs to be done? By that, I mean, we're going to be required to do work to mitigate both temperature and effluent into the South Yamhill River. And I'm wondering if the infrastructure that we create in, by way of paths, might be something that we could roll into other funding mechanisms besides parks like riparian restoration that might be required when we need to do that work? Because I think they're going to be kind of contemporaneous and overlapping. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and we do have a project management team internally at the city that includes public works, working on, I think you might be referring to the National Pollution, the NPDES permitting and work that we have to do and some of the stormwater treatment. So they are at the table internally on our technical work group, and they can help with that too. But yes, the most we can diversify our funding options and how we might qualify for grants and other sources is going to be important about this, and Cindy, you may have something else to add.
I'm just going to say that that's definitely a key trend we're seeing across the nation is how do we combine the synergies needed with climate resiliency, climate mitigation, as well as recreation uses? I think for years, we've often talked about how parks' lower-cost options such as trails and in some cases the open turf areas and flood zones are actually highly effective because not only do they provide recreation when dry, but when wet, they can actually help filtrate your stormwater, for example, and mitigate flood damage. So certainly something we'll keep in mind.
Yeah, if I could follow up, I mean, that's exactly what I was thinking, except my concern is that if we do pass and trails in along these seasonal floodplains, they're going to be hard to maintain, and there's going to be a cost associated with that. And so I think in the past, those kinds of things tend to fall out of city budgets. But if it's tied somehow to the restoration work that we need to do, then there's a potential funding mechanism. And I guess the better way to ask that question is, as part of your process, can you recommend funding mechanisms to help pay for that type of seasonal maintenance that we know happens all the time in those types of vertical parks? And then, final comment, I just wanted to echo Counselor Garvin's comment about adding exercise equipment to the linear trails. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Peralta. And I believe then we are ready to close our conversation on Parks and Recreation. Thank you Director Mayor, thank you Ms. Mendoza, and thank you to everybody for their participation. And we will move into the Fox Ridge Road area plan. And I would like to call on our senior planner, Tom Shower, to introduce the topic.
Thank you Mayor Jobb, Ken, city councilors, and school board members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The, I want to take this opportunity to provide an update on the Fox Ridge Road area plan project. We, this is on page four of your packet, and the purpose of the work session this evening is information sharing, so there's no action that we're asking for. I want to provide some background information about the Fox Ridge Road area plan, provide an update on the project status, and provide some background information about the school district property that's in this planning area, and talk about opportunities for involvement. So McMinnville has amended its urban growth boundary over the years. Most recently in 2020, there was a substantial amount of land, sorry, additional land added to the boundary. And the areas predominantly that were added, you can see here in the different shaded areas on this map. The Fox Ridge Road area is an area that was, part of that was already in the urban growth boundary. And the school district brought property into the urban growth boundary and annexed into the city, and then some additional land was added to the urban growth boundary in that area in 2020. So this is generally on the west side of town, west of Hill Road. It goes up both sides of Fox Ridge Road and includes some property along Hill Road, including the property the school district owns. So when we talk about area planning, we're talking about one step in a process that guides the transition from those areas that are in McMinnville's urban growth boundary as they, they're unincorporated for the most part. And as those transition from rural to urban uses, then we, as property owners, seek to annex into the city to develop per-city standards. There's a sort of a three-step process that guides that transition from rural land use to urban land use. So we start with a high-level concept plan called the Framework Plan that was adopted in 2020 for those areas that were brought into the urban growth boundary to provide a high-level concept of how those areas would accommodate the needed land uses and different amenities and how they could tie in with these surrounding areas. Then we move into the area planning process where we are now, which essentially takes a closer look at those areas more at the property level and starts putting detail to those concepts as to how those could work. And then finally, as individual property owners within these areas seek to annex into the city and develop their properties, if and when they're ready to do that, then they would need to develop a master plan, essentially a development plan for those individual properties as they seek annexation, showing how those would be consistent with the area plans that have been adopted. So Fox Ridge Road is the first area plan of those areas that we, were identified on the map earlier. This is an overview of the Framework Plan that shows, again, high-level concepts of the different land uses, potential opportunities for transportation connections, trails, parks, open space, views, a whole series of issues to look at when we get into those more detailed area plans. So the Fox Ridge Road area is located up here on the, again, the Framework Plan. The area, it's about 234 acres, the school district property is part of that. The school district parcel is the only one that's actually already in the city limits, but is key to, key component of the development and planning for this area. So the Framework Plan for that area identifies the future high school site, identifies potential views out from the ridge area. There's also an activity, a neighborhood activity center identified that would accommodate things to be planned for that include neighborhood-serving commercial and services, some component of higher density, and then throughout the area, a combination of other lower-density residential uses, opportunities for green space. There's the, the land uses need in this area also include plans for a neighborhood-sized park about three to five acres as well. We're working through the project with a project team. I am the lead for this project for the city of McMinnville. We have a consultant team that's led by HHPR, includes Sarah Architects on the urban design side, DKS Associates to do transportation, planning, evaluation of the plans for this area, and then Johnson Economics to do economic analysis to help us look at the feasibility of the concept plans. We're going through a process where we essentially started, kicked off the project, we go into the mode of gathering, assessing information. With that information that we gather through both technical analysis and published data sources, as well as input from community members, we then go into the process of developing alternatives and evaluating those, selecting a preferred alternative and developing and refining that, and then finally, developing the plan for adoption. So we actually just last night held a community design workshop over there at Civic Hall and walked through, getting input from community members, helping us understand some of those opportunities and constraints, and sharing their ideas for how we can take those things there in the Framework Plan and look at that in more detail to help meet those needs going forward. So we're partway through that gathering, assessing information, where the stage is developing and evaluating, evaluating alternatives. The project is scheduled to be completed and go through the adoption process by the end of this year. We've been, this project has been guided through a project advisory committee. We got a kickoff meeting with them in the fall, we've conducted stakeholder interviews. We have a community survey that's open right now through April 10th. And then again, last night, we had our first community design workshop. We have a number of additional meetings coming up here, and as we work through those tasks to evaluate... to evaluate and develop alternatives, and then go through the process of selecting road alternative and refining that. Finally, we have a public hearing scheduled to take a draft plan through the adoption process in November and December. The, I want to talk a little bit about just the context here. So the, again, the area is about a total of 234 acres. School district property is about 42 acres of that. As we looked at the Framework Plan, one of the things you noticed is just the interface of the school district property with proximity to essentially residential neighborhoods, Neighborhood Activity Center that will, is intended to have a mix of housing types and address different housing needs, as well as provide some of those amenities to the neighborhood, again, such as neighborhood, commercial, services, recreational opportunities, et cetera. And so the school district property was annexed into the city, it was brought into the urban growth boundary and annexed in 2005. The property has, it's R4 zoning, which is a residential zone, has what we call a plan development overlay associated with it, which is sort of special conditions that become part of the zoning of the property, describes uses and sometimes they have special development standards. The, when the property was annexed, the provisions that apply to it that are outlined in ordinance 4829, which is included in your packet materials, specify that the use of the property is limited to the high school and ancillary uses. And high school schools are conditional uses in residential zones, so it would also go through a conditional use permit review process. Pardon me. We understand after some of our stakeholder interviews and talking with your staff that something that's, I think, most are aware of is that some of the earlier forecasting in the 90s and 2000s was indicating higher growth in school age population. More recent forecasting has identified that some of that near-term growth in, in high school age population, it will, is forecast to be slower than originally was forecast. So what does that mean for planning for the Fox Ridge Road area? Well, we do long-range planning. Typically, the planning we do under state law is to address planning, land use needs for a 20-year period. We know oftentimes, areas that are planned for that, despite what our requirements are to, and assumptions for forecasting, that sometimes different areas grow faster or slower. But if we develop a plan for those areas, those tend to be durable plans, whether the growth actually happens faster or slower than forecast. So we understand the uncertainty that can occur with timing. We can still plan for those areas and recognize that the, the timing of development happens differently than what may be in the assumptions. So it is, the school district site is a key component. It's a major element of the Fox Ridge Road area as we go through this planning process. We had great engagement last night with a number of people who came to the design workshop that were really thoughtful about discussions of the relationship between the school site and neighborhoods and how different land uses would interact and relate to one another to ensure that there were complementary elements of how those all related. And they wanted to be sure that the planning included good assumptions for, as we start looking at how to accommodate those different land uses, parks, amenities, transportation, walkability, bikeability, trails, recreational opportunities, and open spaces, that a lot of thought is given to how the neighborhood and, and future student population would, would complement one another and how the, the area plan can accommodate those in a positive way. So with that, I, this again is predominantly just to share information with you about the process, understanding what it is, how we're moving forward through that, and just invite you to, to engage as we go through that process to help us make sure that the plans, as we begin to process that information that we've received and look at developing alternatives, that you share your input with us as we look at how to best plan for this area, select among the alternatives, and put together the best plan for the area. So with that, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. The piece to the north of the school district property, is that in the same zone as the school district property? Was, has that changed?
It is not. So the, let me put the map back up. The property just to the north of that is actually outside the urban growth boundary, so that is still under county, county rural zoning, county ag zoning, I believe.
Was that the site that was identified by the C.Later Foundation at one point?
Yes, some time ago. They sought to bring that into the urban growth boundary, yes.
They, I couldn't quite hear that. What was that last part?
That was a property that had sought to, to come into the urban growth boundary previously, but was not successful.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm trying to bring the map up.
Counselor Gary?
Yeah, just curious, the, what the, with the recent forecast and population changes, what's the school district's discussion and calculus on the use of that site going forward? Or what the process for discussions will be? Not all at once?
I think that hopes dures eternal, or something like that. I think that our current forecast shows that for the next five years, or for the next 10 years, our population, student population is unchanging. I don't think that I want to build on that. I'm, I'm, I think that that's not a community I want to live in that has a dying school system. And so that's where we're going to build our next high school, is the, is where I would say. And let's, let's make the changes to get more students, more kids into our community.
Additional comments, questions?
You know, I would say, again, that site is, is our, is going to be our next high school. And, and when we look out, I mean, it's really hard forecast, but it would be a number of years. But I would also think, say that things change. You know, would we ever, again, revisit a satellite campus or something? So there are always things that might come up. And I think the district has done a good job of accessing properties for their future needs. But, you know, we never know how things change. How we realize that Zoom education is probably not the future. So we are going to need buildings. But again, you know, we never know exactly what.
Thank you. And I see Community Development Director Richards on the line. How's her hand up?
Yes, thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last person's comments on Zoom, so if I'm saying something that's already said, my apologies. But we have internally talked about how to move forward with the school site in this 20-year planning process, with some of the dialogues in the community about the forecasting. And really, from our perspective, a, a policy decision was made in 2004 or '05 when it was purchased and brought into the city and cited as a school site. And until that policy decision changes with action as well, that's how, how we'll be moving forward, the planning process for it. But there's always opportunities to amend these planning processes. And we've talked a lot about, you know, if, if as we move forward, there, things change of some nature, and people, and the site changes or the needs for the site change, the way we plan for public facilities to support a high school site is, is fairly intense and dense in terms of the public facilities to support it. So those same public facilities could support other intensive and dense uses on that site.
Director Richards, will you just, while we're on the topic, could you talk about the limitation in, when the property was annexed into the city, that it was for, or, Senior Planner Tom Shower, that it was for a high school use only? I was trying to scan the ordinance here. But as you're talking about the flexibility of, of plans to adapt and change, how does that tie in with regulation that's so strict when the property was brought into the city?
I'm going to defer to Tom on that. I believe this was annexed in with a ballot vote, when we were still doing ballot votes in the city for annexation, and that, that's, that's how the ordinance landed, where it landed. But Tom has done more research on it than I.
Yes, there was an ordinance that included the annexation, as well as the, the zoning to R4 zoning. And there were, just on the, this is page 12 of the packet attachment, too, is the ordinance. On page 13, there's about six conditions that are listed in there. So there's a requirement that a detailed master plan would be submitted, and it goes through approval or denial, the master plan would be based on certain findings and factors, dealing with how it integrates into the neighborhood. Condition three is the one that says that the residentially zoned land shall be limited to a public high school ancillary uses, subject to an approved conditional use permit. It goes through, through that a little more. So that is part of the planned development overlay that's attached to the zoning. If down the road, there was a change, then that would need to go through an amendment process to, essentially similar to a rezone or a plan development amendment, to look at that. I think there was probably, as part of the UGB amendment, it seemed that there was some documentation that was required by the state at that time to justify inclusion of the land in the urban growth boundary due to the, the county zoning that was on the property at the time.
Yeah, and if I may, what I was just trying to bring up was that with area planning, with the area planning efforts, what we're trying to do is make sure we're setting the table in terms of public facilities to support the future development of these lands. And a high school site is a pretty intense development, so the public facility support for that will, will reflect that. And so if there are, you know, changes down the road in terms of how that site moves forward, the, the public facilities that we plan for should be able to support any future changes of similar intensity of use.
Understood. Thank you. Please, Mr. Wilmer.
I guess, as we have worked through the years as a school board, we've always done our best to make sure we're looking forward and until about five or six years ago, we were growing not very consistently up and to the right. So the expectation was, is to always have a location for an elementary school, a location for a middle school, and a location for a high school within our possession. Should we ever have to build that, we'd have to obviously go out for a bond or something along those lines, but we don't have to go out for a bond to buy the land. The land is there, it's to go out for the bond, for the building costs and those kind of things. With enrollment, I wouldn't say it's declining, I would say flattening out, it's probably fair. The need for a brand-new high school in the next five years is unlikely, because our enrollment at the high school will probably peak and then start to trickle down a little bit. But in reality, when you look at the size of that property, it's bigger than where our high school is now, by about 10 acres. So to have a, a single comprehensive high school for 2,000 to 2,500 kids requires more land even than we have our, our existing high school, is barely big enough for a middle school. So it, I think, long-term, are we going to be in dead center of town with another high school to get to 3,000 before we decide to build a second? I don't know, but we probably won't be to 3,000 kids there anytime soon. So I think those decisions have been, building another high school is an amount of, we have the land, so let's do it. You know, there, there's some costs and efficiencies that go along with a high school that's about 1,500 kids is probably the minimum that you can efficiently and effectively administer it and, and offer enough programs to, to have interest. Anything smaller than that becomes economically disadvantageous. So right now, we're not at a place big enough to even think about splitting it. And at the last bond, looking at those things, the community was dead-set against another high school. Although, think about it now, they say, wow, that would have been great. But to split our high school at, at our last bond would have meant we'd had two schools at 1,100 kids, so which would have been inefficient in both locations. So I think there's more that we have yet to discover and decide, but our immediate use for that land, I wouldn't say is in the next five to 10 years. I think that is, would be, even looking that far out is probably still unrealistic for us to have a use for it, for the high school that we've attended.
Thank you. Yes, and I'll just remind everybody to really speak into your mics, otherwise, our audience on Zoom and anybody that's watching at home really struggles to, to be able to participate in the conversation.
Sure. And I, I think I concur with my fellow board member. I think there is some question on the, the size of that land, for, for instance, or for comparison, that Sherwood High School was built on 75 acres with 1,600 students. So I think there is some question, to answer your question, Counselor Gary, if that, that site is, is sufficient enough to do something like that.
To, to that end, can you educate me on the process for planning, asking and answering that question? When do you do it? Is it around your bond process? How do you ask it? How do you answer it? How do you engage your, the community? And when do you, when do you know and move on? And when do you crack the book open again on, on, not, I guess, not necessarily just the high school piece, but any of those pieces? We're sort of specifically framing it around that piece, but.
I think we go, go, thank you. I think we go back to sort of the way I was asking the same question about parks. We're looking at student enrollment every year. Every two years, I'm expecting Superintendent Brockett to kick me under the table if I get this out of line. Every two years, we do a comprehensive survey and, and look at projections, and we use those to say, this is where we're going to be on a very micro level, just from a budget perspective, but on a long-term perspective on where we're going to need more facilities. And then our bond schedule is, I think we come up for a bond on the 28th, or the 2028. At that point, we'll have done a comprehensive survey of all of our existing facilities and where we need resources. If that answers your question, but go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I might ask Justice Larry, but, or Superintendent Brockett, but we do comprehensive facilities evaluation and assessments every five years?
We have a running 10-year plan. That's, you know, looking, always looking 10 years ahead, and we have for many, as long as I've been on the board. And that's a really a guiding document for when we're looking at bonds. As Carson said, we also look at when one bond retires, that's a, you know, a good time to go out. But it's really driven by population. And as Larry said, you know, five years ago, our population growth was much different than it is now. And at the time we bought the high school property, again, as mentioned, we had looked to make sure we had in the bank, properties for each new school at each level. And that piece of property was really the only thing that was even remotely available at that time. And at the same time, we got it into the urban growth boundary, that's why all those documents were done. Since then, have looked at property out behind Evergreen, there's been some others that have come up. So as Paul said, you know, things can change over time, but it's important for us to have that in our, in our inventory for, we could turn around and growth could start in two years, who knows? It's, you know, who knows what's going to happen in the future? Nobody can predict anymore. But it's important for us, and yes, we are looking at a second high school at some point, God knows when, because this town doesn't want to have schools that are not 6A. So it may be a while before we ever get, you know, a second high school. But we do have that property, that is the intention of it, has been all along. But as, as pointed out, things can change. And I think it's important to keep up the conversations because there may be, we've had talks with Evergreen for several years about trading some property and having, you know, high school property out there, so. we've had talks with Evergreen for several years about trading some property and having, you know, high school property out there, so.
Forgive me, I'll bite. What's 6A mean?
Oh, the sports levels. Where six and, or athletics, you know, the high schools are ranked.
Is 6A the highest, oh, the highest?
Is the highest, yeah.
And it's based on your enrollment in your school. Your student enrollment at your high school is over a certain number. 6A is the largest. So it would be the same size in student population of high schools. It would be with Portland Public, any of the Salem schools, any of the biggest schools around.
We have to stay 6A to maintain that Newburgh rivalry.
And I do think it's important to remember, as we talked about flattened growth near, that's our, we always report out on our lower number growth. However, if you look at our flow analytics, recent report they did for us, if we were to go with their high numbers, which is dependent on how many affordable houses we build in this community. So as we start to talk about building a new community with possible affordable homes for families to move into, that will have a direct impact on what flow analytics said could be our high number of growth. So if we do build affordable homes, which by me reading the report for Fox Ridge, it sounds like that's going to be a possibility, that there should be affordable homes that families can once again move back into. And I say families, I'm talking about our teachers that can afford homes in our community right now and our staff members. So as that is built, that could directly impact the need for the second high school. But without affordable homes, that's kind of where our growth has stalled and will continue to stall. So I think that's real important as we talk about expanding a community with affordable housing. We keep in mind that what flow analytics predicted was all on the homes and the possible growth. But Fox Ridge talks a lot more about the affordable homes and the different types of housing that'll be in that community. So I do think that would have a direct impact. And once it impacts our high school, it impacts our middle schools and our elementaries as well. And I know the conversation about when do we start looking, we have that conversation constantly. But for us to say when a school will be built will depend on what kind of homes are built in our community. Because if we can bring that families back into the community, then we'll need that high school a lot quicker than what we may have predicted with flow analytics.
And Council President?
Yeah, a question for you, Ms. Brockett. On the flow analytics, does it just take into account kind of the building permit numbers? Or does it look at like Stratus Village coming online and how many apartments that is? And the opportunity for youth to be coming out of there and how that's going to affect Subul and Columbus and kind of redrawing those school boundary lines? And then after we get through this Fox Ridge plan, our next area is a southwest area plan, which is very vacant land that would have more of that workforce housing that you're speaking to and have similar, you know, home density like the Redmond Hill area.
You know, I wish my finance director was here that worked closely with them because she could explain this much clearer than I could. But I'm going to try. Flow Analytics looks at any growth that they are fully aware of at the time they do their report. That's why they give you a small, a medium, and a high, because they know that there's developments that are going to be built and homes that are going to go up that they're unaware of. So they give us the high number so that if we start to hear of developments that they didn't originally know of, that weren't in our plan, that we could then switch our enrollment forecast from the middle to low into the high forecast area again. That's why they give us three different numbers and not just the one. So we always go off the middle. We're very lucky to be a community when other communities are losing kids. We've been very good at being at least maintaining the students we have and growing just slightly. So that's why we go off the middle plan. But we do have the potential of moving to the higher forecast if we start to hear of new developments that are bringing in families that directly impact our schools.
Counselor Garvin, I did ask flow analytics when they presented and they did communicate with the planning department. And, you know, that changes relatively rapidly. And I can't remember whether it was before or after the urban growth boundary expansion had been approved. But it was that micro, but not potentially that micro. So there was communication down to the level of what's the planning department know right now? Whether they knew about the expansion of the urban growth boundary? What we have seen is that we haven't kept up with what our projections are as far as housing. There's economic factors that are sort of beyond this group that are affecting.
So can you be, when was that flow analytics done?
They do it every two years. This last one was, is probably coming on two years old.
They just reported out last, that's when I was here. So last year, they just did the report that actually goes through 2031. However, they just completed the, so they would have completed it the year before and reported out on it last year.
So that would have included projections for everything out on Baker Creek Road? Correct.
Yes.
Interesting.
And Community Development Director? Oh, did you have another question? I'm sorry. Nope. Community Development Director Richards?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. Flow Analytics works very closely with us when they're doing their work. We will talk to them about what our future planning processes are and where we anticipate high-density housing going. And then we dig into the permits. So they look at all the permits that we have in our system. They also talk to us about who we're talking to in terms of potential projects. So they do a fairly in-depth analysis of both future forecasting that we have in terms of development and also what's in the pipeline.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I interrupted a question over here. Board Walmer?
The only addition that I was going to place to that is you've heard a lot about affordable housing and whether it's for our staff and their kids, whether it be educators or folks that are working classified. It's also the folks that live in our community. $400,000 and over homes are not single-family homes. Absolutely not. You're not going to get people to move out here and buy a home and have a kindergartner and a second grader. Those aren't the jobs that people have. So affordable housing is well, well below that. So everything like out on Baker Creek has really little impact to our enrollment numbers. As a matter of fact, it's actually driving them down.
Any additional comments on this? We do have one more agenda item and this meeting was only scheduled till eight. So I would like to move us into the third agenda item if there's no additional comments. All right, wonderful. Invite back up our Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Muir.
So we're going to pick up where you last left off at the joint meeting when you were talking about flow analytics and property. The topic of our planning process for a new rec center came up. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Okay, we do partner a lot on facilities, both indoor and out, and have a lot of very successful events because of our unique partnership. And years ago, when we were, many, many, many years ago, we entered into agreement saying, the school district knows that we have facilities that they would like to use occasionally and we have facilities, or they have facilities that we would like to use, both indoors and outdoors. So we have a long history of partnering in this. And I will say our staffs continue to program and work together on the joint facilities and moving through that agreement. And it works very well from our side and we really appreciate the partnership. And our rooms and your school gyms get used for a lot of joint projects. So that's a great thing. So like I mentioned, we're going to be picking up on the recreation facility master planning that we've been doing and just walk you through a quick update of what's happened. This, I'm going to go through a quick timeline just to give you the background. Back in 2019, some of this will sound familiar to the process that you're talking about in terms of facility assessments. We did a facility condition assessment of all city buildings. And through that, we ended up grouping them into three general areas. Those that were doing pretty well, those that needed investment and to have some more updates on capital replacements. And then also those that were in what we considered to be poor condition. From that 2019 study, we, one of, two of the buildings in there were the Aquatic Center and the Community Center. They were in the category of having not really been invested in, not really being maintained in a way that would account for their long-term survival rates with things like roofs and H-back systems. And so through that, when that came forward, the council asked us to do a feasibility study on how we might look at the future of those two buildings. And that feasibility study had a community component of it. We walked the parks and talked to the community about what they'd like to see for the future of their Parks and Rec buildings. And the council ultimately directed us as staff to plan to replace the Aquatic Center and Community Center with one joint building, update the senior center, and then bring our library into the conversation. So that's what we did. In 2021, we had the concept planning phase. And you may have heard this referred to as MACPAC. This was a community advisory committee of 19 community members. And Ryan McCurven sat on that committee for us and was a great liaison back and forth. Through about a two-year planning process that included a pandemic, that committee recommended that we build a new rec center. They put forward two preferred locations. Those locations are on Lynnfield University-owned property near the Albertsons and then the Mack Water and Light-owned property that is just up the hill from Joe Dancer Park across from their administrative offices. So they recommended those two preferred locations. They also recommended operational programming. In other words, what does our community want to see in terms of our offerings? Like I mentioned earlier, a lot of emphasis on health and wellness. So the building that we're in currently right now does not really help us with that. It's an old armory, as you know, and it's got a lot of meeting rooms in it, but not a lot of great places to have trampoline parks or gymnastics classes. So the future building that they recommended was 125,000 square feet. And the estimated price tag for that was $111 million. They also recommended that the senior center needs some improvements. The usage of that actually has changed over time. And our seniors are engaging with fitness in a different way than they used to. So there's some circulation and some fitness amenities that we need to update there. That had a price tag of three and a half million dollars. And then we also talked about a new library somewhere at Upper City Park or at the location of the existing Aquatic Center. And that was recommended to be about 30,000 square feet at a cost of about 25 million. And these were escalated to March of '23. However, given what's happened, I don't think those are as relevant probably as we thought they were two years ago. So then in 2022, one of the things that came out of that planning process was the need to really solidify the city's finances in a way that we could support the types of services that came through our core services work. So to stabilize that, the city council enacted the $13 a month city service fee. And then we also have teed up a fire district vote for the May of '23 election. And the idea is that will give us the flexibility to understand what any additional revenue might be able to go to in terms of the community's priorities. And we need that because we need to know what our operating capacity is. What can we fund in terms of operating a new building? And what we really want to make sure we do is operate it in a way where we're doing long-term maintenance on our buildings. So we want to be certain that whatever we build, we can operate and do so for long-term with the type of maintenance and capital replacements that we really need in our buildings. So right now, the fire districting and community engagement on city priorities is happening. And we are also scanning for what's on the horizon. We talked about this a little bit at your last joint meeting. We know you all are planning on looking at 2028 as a potential capital bond. We know Shemeketa is currently talking to partners about a 2024 capital bond. And so we're trying to get the lay of the land about when we might be looking for something if this project, if the community wants this project to move forward. So we've identified some challenges. Obviously, our existing buildings continue to decline. We've kind of made a conscious decision not to invest in the long-term maintenance of them at this point while we go through this process and really wait to invest in the new buildings. So we're watching those very closely. We have a potential loss of community enthusiasm. The MACPAC group really brought a lot of enthusiasm to it and we don't want to lose that. But as time goes on, people might get a little discouraged at a lack of progress. So we're watching those challenges carefully as well. We just talked about this. Construction prices continue to increase and make that more challenging. Another challenge is pretty basic, that we have an unknown location for this building and we don't have property to build it on currently. We talked about the city's long-term finances. That's a challenge. Really make sure that we're planning far enough ahead and being strategic in the way we run our programs and right-size our facilities and our offerings. There were other city facilities that were in that not great condition that we need to think about too. And that's another challenge, how we bring all of our facilities to the same point of being in good condition and have a long life. And then, of course, there's other city priorities that also come into the equation while we're dealing with affordable housing, houselessness. There's a lot of things that are pulling on all of us as a community. And so those are the things that we look at in terms of the challenges for this project to move forward. And we do think that there are opportunities. For example, right now with the PROS Plan that you just heard about, we think that's a great way to integrate both indoor and outdoor recreation space. So that should be done in the fall, winter. And that's hopefully when we'll start looking at joining those two plans together. We think we have strength and alignment in the city's current leadership with both from an elected perspective and administrative perspective. And so that's a strength for us. We continue to develop new partnerships and solidify our existing partnerships. And we are not afraid to talk to anybody about a potential partnership. No, there's no bad ideas about how we can meet the recreational needs of our community. We're also being, trying to be open to innovation and creative ideas about how we can meet the needs of our community. And we've had some pretty exciting conversations about other samples and sort of patterns of ways other communities have met this need. And we're looking into all of those and seeing what worked long-term and what didn't work long-term and learn from that. I will say this process of going through the facility planning has changed Parks and Rec and the way we offer programs in a lot of different ways. The one that we've talked about is really accessibility and offering adaptive programs. We heard from our community that they would like to see more of that. And so we want to provide more of that. We also go out to our community differently. You heard a little bit from Cindy about the way we did that with the PROS Plan. And one of the things that we've been working really hard on is to go to our community rather than trying to get them to come to us. So our entire summer fund program is going to apartment complexes, neighborhood parks, and other places where community members might not be able to get to us. And so we know that. We've, I think I mentioned this at your last joint meeting. We have now a recreation van that we will be taking around for this year's summer fund in order to try and engage even more people in our process. We also are learning a lot more about what it means to be welcoming to all in our community. And we continue to try and challenge ourselves and make progress in that area. And we're really modifying our programming and taking a more holistic work. Some of the programs that we used to offer only at the senior center, through the pandemic, we learned we actually would get a lot more people if we offered it at the community center. And so we've moved some things around a lot and really learned how we can improve and serve more people. So we also think that the community momentum is an opportunity. We do think that this is, there's a need in the community, that people are talking about it. And we think there's some momentum there that we can hopefully tap into. And then one of the terms that was used often through this planning process was think big and think about the future. And that really ignited that kind of culture, not only in Parks and Rec, but I think through the organization as a whole of how we can really think big and challenge ourselves to achieve our goals. So what's next? And these are some of the concept designs and facades that came out of the conceptual planning work that MACPAC did. We know that we need to acquire property either through purchase or lease for this is one of the most important steps. We also know going back out to the public for engagement on the concept plan and the financial plan and then move that forward to a detailed design work is important for us. We know financial forecasting, as I mentioned earlier, for both the capital and operating budgets of a new building will be critical. We also think we need to have a capital campaign to start kicking this off and show our community that we all want this to happen. And then, of course, solidifying partnerships and agreements and applying for grants is one of the things that we continue to work on while we're looking for property. And I just can't emphasize enough, acquiring property is one of the most important things and the fastest thing that we need to do before we can move anything forward. So we continue to have conversations with as many people as we can to try and find the right piece of property at the right location for our community. So this is one example of our shared facilities. And this was an amazing photo. I loved it. We just, hopefully we can move forward with this new facility and continue to work together and provide great opportunities for the youth in our community and families. So that's a little update about where we're at. I'm happy to take any questions. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Director Muir. Uh, looking around the table, questions? No, everybody is, everybody is committed to ending the meeting on time. Council President?
Uh, yeah. Thank you, Susan. Um, as far as property acquisition, the initial MAC PAC plan called out sites of 10 acres or more, that, that's kind of the bare minimum, but if you wanted to have, you know, think big and have an amphitheater and, and those kinds of things, what is the actual, like, ideal size of property?
Yeah, by the end of the backpack conversation, we had upped it to 15 acres. Um, and that was related to the PROS Plan conversation because we recognized we really wanted to have a lot of outdoor amenities at the location where the indoor amenities were. Um, so we added about five acres onto that. Um, that will depend a little bit on the location, but that's about as big as we got was 15 acres.
The two sites still in play are the, the Lynnfield Partnership and the Water and Light property.
Correct. That's the last, um, recommendation that the city council received.
And has there been other properties explored since then?
Uh, we have examined a few, nothing that came to fruition or even viable to take forward to the next step, but we are willing to have conversations with anybody.
There's a recent property that came online at the north end of town that the steel mill owns across from Jim Dorn Dodge. And then there's also been, uh, conversation at the county level of relocating the fairgrounds, and has either one of those sites been explored?
I think Jeff may have had some conversations about city-owned property and what, how that might, how they might be doing their planning work, and it sounds like it's a little longer timeline than they had originally anticipated, but yeah, we're definitely in touch with the county. Um, we also talked to them about whether or not they would like to co-locate at this facility when they were talking about their, um, Health and Human Services, um, office space needs. It was about the same footprint as what the MAC PAC recommendation came out of. Um, so we talked to them about that. They appear to be pretty committed to staying downtown.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a quick information question. Which house is the Nelson House?
The Nelson House is where the former Chamber of Commerce building was, or office were.
Additional questions? Not seeing any. Chair, would you like to close your meeting?
Uh, thank you all. This is exciting, uh, to be together once again, and I guess I want to encourage those who keep track of the dates to get us on for our, uh, next meeting in six months. Is that what we agreed?
That'd be great.
Okay. Uh, meeting, uh, school board meeting adjourned.
Wonderful, and we'll adjourn the joint work session at 7:53 PM. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.